All right, you ready?
Yes, I'll say.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for August the 13th, 2025. It's little after 6 o'clock. We're at City Council, Chamber 345 High Street, of course, in Hamilton. If you do have your phones with you, please put them on really soft sound, okay? All right. We got to start off first with an oath of office from our acting city clerk, Ed Wilson.
Sorry?
All righty. Let's go right out here. All right. Take my pen. Okay. Please. Do this before. Ready?
Yes.
Have your right hand. I, Edward Wilson.
I, Edward Wilson.
Salam swear.
Salam swear.
That I obey the Constitution.
That I obey the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
That I will in all respect.
That I will in all respect.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter.
Of the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
Of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city clerk.
Of city clerk.
Of the city of Hamilton.
City of Hamilton.
As acting clerk.
As acting clerk.
Thank you, sir. Again, I'll sign this. Excellent. Can you pop your head?
Yes.
Thank you for your pen.
No problem.
Okay. Rule call, sir. Certainly. Moller?
Present.
Pullman?
Present.
Fear?
Present.
Vaughn?
Present.
Ryan?
Present.
Nab?
Present.
And Lauer?
Present.
Okay. We're going to start off by offering a prayer by Vice Mayor Eric Pullman, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for a special person in the city who passed away.
Lord, when the weight feels too heavy and the path too long, remind us that we are never alone. Give us the courage to face what lies ahead, the patience to endure what we cannot change, and the faith to trust you that you are working all things for our good, renew our spirits, strengthen our hearts, and guide our steps each day. We also ask that you watch over our first responders so that they may be protected from harm while they are, while they work every day to protect us. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. You can do a moment of silence for a member of our Hamilton Fire Division and recognize the passing Lieutenant Tony Manfredi, Hamilton Fire Department firefighter. He was working his way up. He was a lieutenant in the, in the Fire Department. He trained other firefighters. He also was an educator at Butler Tech, so he added great value to the profession of firefighter and his impact and the knowledge that he passed on to others will go down for years and years and years for those who educated. Moment of silence for Lieutenant Manfredi. Thank you. Okay, special presentations.
Certainly, sir. First up, we have Build Back the Block items by Ms. Lauren Nelson, the Director of Planning.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and members of council. And so I am here tonight to give an update on Build Back the Block. As you all recall, we had started some legislation regarding the city's efforts with a number of community partners to do some infill housing in the Jefferson neighborhood. And then we pulled that legislation as we got into it and learned more. And so what there's, all of this is coming back to you, or most of it's coming back to you tonight. And so it seemed appropriate to just give a sort of quick overview of what's different from the legislation that was started compared to what is before you tonight. So there's sort of three different partners and areas where we are building that are in the legislation that's before you tonight. First off is two houses in the 200, in the 900 block of East Avenue. These parcels are being transferred to Core, and the builder, general contractor will be Community First Solutions. It is three parcels that are going to be replatted for two single-family homes. The legislation that became before you the first time was the sale and transfer of the property and the funding arrangement in one document. And as we got into the process farther and working with legal counsel and talking to the, the partners involved in this, that got separated. So what's before you tonight, the legislation is sort of two agreements for each of these partners. So there's now a purchase and sale agreement, then a separate document that talks about the funding agreement. That still includes the utility and permit fee waiver program, which council approved many months ago, and the architectural plan. So that's one piece of it. That's the Core and Community First Solutions. Secondly, is seven houses that Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati is going to build. These are, one on Maple Avenue, and then six others along Ludlow Street, sort of in the 800, 900 block of Ludlow Street. And I have a map to show where those are. What's different from last time, again, the, the agreements themselves has changed from one to two to better separate those, but also it was previously five, five lots were in the original agreement. 810 Ludlow Street, as it exists today, is actually two parcels. And so we were originally just transferring one of those two parcels to Habitat, and they came back and requested the second parcel to do an additional house. So it's now six city parcels going to them with both of those agreements. And then a seventh funding agreement, which is a parcel that they own, in yellow there, 821, is a parcel that Habitat already owns. So the ones in red are the city properties that are in legislation that are getting both of those agreements, the sale and the funding. And then the 821 Ludlow is just the funding agreement because Habitat already owns that. So they are doing seven houses. And thirdly, in the 1200 block of Ludlow Street, there's a single parcel that Todd Homes LLC, a local builder, expressed interest in participating in this program. And we have had communication with additional builders and anticipate that there'll be other private builders that are looking to get involved and partner with us in this going forward. So this is the first of those, but very similar to the others in that it's, you know, contemplating a single-family house being built includes the two agreements, the same utility and permit fee waiver program, and the plans that we've been working on with CDA to have architectural plans to make available to partners. My last comment is just that the 600 block of East Avenue, which is where Neighborhood Housing Services is going to be building two houses, that did come before you when the rest of this did previously. But based on the state funding that they are looking to get, the grant dollars that will be involved in that project, it's not yet ready to come back to you because that's still being worked out at the state level and so, and sort of the, the grant arrangement there. So just a note that that's not part of what's before you tonight, but we fully expect to have that to you at an upcoming meeting once we know more details about the grant dollars. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Lauren, is there, I know you've said it, what is the minimum square footage of each house? I believe you've said it. Is there a minimum?
I did not say it. I don't recall off the top of my head. I don't know if Craig or Liz remembers.
So each, each one of these different partners has a different design, and so the square footage will vary, but it'll run anywhere from a minimum of 800 square feet up to probably 1,600 to 1,800 square feet?
Yeah, like three-bedroom, two or three-bathroom, two, or two-story homes. Most of these include a basement. One of them is a slab house. And, yeah, different, the houses will look different for each partner.
Is it required to be owner-occupied for a set number of years?
Correct.
By the original person? Original?
Yeah, so not the, not the builders, not the, not the partners here, but yes, these will be marketed to owner occupants, sold to owner occupants. And that is part of the agreement and like a deed restriction that goes on the sale of these properties, that homeowner occupancy requirement.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Lauren.
Lauren, thank you because importantly, they're not all cookie cutters. They're not all the same in, in building on different lots within the same nearby community and on the same streets and things. The roof lines, the identity of the fronts of the homes, living spaces, as, as City Manager said, anywhere from 800 to 1,600, 1,700 gives tolerance for families, gives tolerance for two people who live in that home comfortably and things like that, and affordability and things. So celebrate the fact that we've got all these partners that are saying, yes, we want to do this in our city and make it happen and make it happen quickly. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Lauren.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next will be the introduction of the new self-director, Sarah Starr, and some program updates. I think Vice Mayor Pullman is going to say a few words of introduction.
Okay. Well, first of all, before I introduce Ms. Sarah, but what, the program that I'm involved with that I really enjoy is SELF. I've said that before. It stands for Supports and Encourages Low-Income Families. And it was a board that Mayor Pat talked me into, and I kind of reluctant, and I went up and I, now I love it, and it's, I'm glad I do this. And we had a director there, Jeffrey Diver, who just, after 30, 29 years, 29 years, not 30, he didn't make that 30, but he retired at the end of July. And we went, we went on a search, the board went on a search to find a new director, and luckily we found that director right in, right in the same building who was actually assisting Jeff all the time. And what a perfect name she has because it'll be our new star for SELF. And Sarah is very, she's very motivated. I don't think that she's going to miss a beat. I think she's going to just excel at this program because she has a lot of heart in it. She has a lot of passion. She's a, you're a pretty smart person too, Sarah. So I said it's, she, I'm, I'm very happy to have her on, the board is very happy to have her. And we just think you're just going to go right into this job and do a great job. And I wanted to ask Mayor Pat to let me have you come up here tonight to explain the program a little bit, take some time, and also to introduce you to everybody. So here's Ms. Sarah Starr, our new director.
Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for having me tonight. It's a pleasure to be here. And I also want to say a special thank you to Vice Mayor Eric Pullman, who currently, like you said, serves on our board, and to the mayor for serving on our board for many years. We, we appreciate your dedication to our organization very much. And as Eric said, I am the new Executive Director of Supports to Encourage Low-Income Families. After those 29 years of service, Jeff is beginning a very well-deserved adventure in retirement, and I'm very honored to lead our organization into the next chapter. I finished my master's degree and spent 10 years at another nonprofit and then started at SELF nearly four years ago. And it didn't take very long for me to see how much SELF means to the community, the individuals we serve, and to the team itself. And it took me no time at all to know that this was the right place for me. I am looking forward to all that the future has in store for SELF and for our community. Our mission at SELF is to enhance the lives of county residents by impacting the causes of poverty and empowering individuals to achieve, sustain, and advocate self-sufficiency. But what does that really mean? What does that really look like? So what that looks like is coming along someone who is weighed down by stressors and burdens, a home that needs repair, a struggle with unemployment, a lack of savings, no support system, and need to build credit, high utility bills, and turning those burdens into building blocks for their future. Our 10 free programs are provided to income-qualified residents of Butler County, and they're here to help individuals grow and plan and build the futures they want. Our mission is to take someone from being burdened down to being built up. And we do that through several different programs. We have the skill development programs that are listed on the screen. We have Getting Ahead, Jobs Now, Money Management, Individual Development Account, and Micro Enterprise and Micro Loan. Something that I love to see with our programs is the confidence people gain from them. You know, they go away with resources, with confidence to move forward, with access to new goals, new opportunities, and they move forward with their plans. Something I'd love to highlight here is in our Individual Development Account program, individuals learn about budgeting and saving for an asset, and they're able to start a savings program at the end. They put in $1 and were able to match it with two. They reached their $1,000 savings goal, and we match it with two, and they have $3,000 to go towards an asset. So they're able to purchase their first home, start a business, or go back to school. And since the program started in 2006, we have 137 individuals who have obtained assets in the amount of $4.9 million. We have 22 people who have received their education, 41 homeowners, 65 businesses, and for a small time, we had special funding for cars, so we had 14 cars purchased as well. And there are 40 current savers in the program. Another special thing, I think, is with our Micro Enterprise and Micro Loan program, where people learn how to start and grow a small business. They go through the entire planning, they have their business plan at the end, and they're even able to apply for a $5,000 micro loan at the end of that process. And since 2011, we've had 265 individuals complete the program, and we have launched 70 businesses from that program. Niels Barbecue, Almond Sisters, Kitty Brew Cafe have all gone through that program, and 42 businesses remain active today. We also have several additional community efforts that I really enjoy that we do. Our Employer Resource Network places a success, success coach onsite of business, partner businesses, that will help employees with things that are going on in their life. They're facing some sort of an obstacle, and it gives them a person right there onsite to help them navigate whatever that complication might be. Our Build Up Academy is construction training, and we work with both of the Marshall High Schools and the Juvenile Rehabilitation Center to provide them with construction skills as they move on to the next stage of their lives. We also have our Neighbors Who Care Renovations Program. We take a home in need of some TLC, we renovate it with volunteers and those Build Up Academy students, and we sell it to a low-to-moderate-income homebuyer. We actually just sold our ninth home, and we are working on finishing number 10 that is right here in Hamilton. Five of our renovation homes so far have been in Hamilton. Our very first was actually in German Village. And then we have our Home Improvement Efforts that ensure that residents stay safely and comfortably in their homes. Our weatherization intake allows the Dayton Agency to come into a home and complete weatherization work that helps them save on energy bills and makes their home safer and more comfortable, more efficient. Our Home Energy Assistance Program helps Butler County's most vulnerable populations stay warm in the winter and cool in the summer. And our Summer Crisis Program began on July 1st this year. Thousands of Hamilton residents are impacted each year by this program. Our Neighbors Who Care Home Repair Program, they complete home repairs and mobility modifications for clients who aren't able to complete that work. It's volunteer-driven, and this year, thanks to our Summer Work Camp efforts, we have had 9,000 volunteer hours so far this year. And part of this program now, we have our Lead Safe Initiative that completes lead safety work on homes built before 1978, that keeps the homes safe from the adverse effects of lead in their homes. And so far with that program, we have completed $1.2 million in lead safety work. And one of the great, great partnerships we have with the city of Hamilton is through our Home Repair Program. For the May 24 to May 25 grant year, we were able to complete 23 repairs on 21 homes in the city. A few of the highlights include repairing steps on the interior and exterior of homes, replacing a water heater for a client who was without warm water for two weeks. We repaired two HVAC systems, eliminated several code violations, and we were also able to utilize our Lead Safe Ohio Grant to complete about $81,000 in renovations in the city. And this grant year, just from May to July of this year, we've already completed 15 home repairs, including painting, wheelchair ramps, handrails, grab bars, and then additionally with the Lead Safe Ohio Grant, we've completed $37,000 in renovations so far in Hamilton. The photos you see on the screen are from the Summer Group Work Camps efforts that we had in June. We were able to welcome over 250 mostly youth volunteers from around the country. They stayed here at Garfield Middle School and completed 30 repairs all over the county. If you've never seen this effort, please come out with us next time because it is truly something to see. The kids put in their all. And that, I think, was one of the hottest weeks that we had had, and they stuck it out and were wonderful troopers with great attitudes, and they made such an impact in our community that week. And so at SELF, this is our approach. Really, the key to what we do is building relationships with the people that we are helping. We want to be a trusted resource. Maybe we don't have the answer inside our doors, but we're going to help them find what they need to succeed. And right now, we are facing uncertainties, especially with our funding. The Community Services Block Grant is a federal funding program that goes to the states and is allocated to the designated community action agencies like us. The federal budget has included recommendations to erase this funding source. The Community Action Network is doing all it can to share how critical this program is for our nation, and I'm hopeful, hopeful that the funding will be maintained. But regardless of the uncertainties we face, I want you all to know that SELF is going to continue to build community and create opportunities for individuals to grow. We will encourage improved economic conditions through our programming and provide vital repairs to the housing market in Hamilton. The work we do is necessary, and the team itself is passionate about helping residents. So as we move into this next chapter, I want to tell you all how much we appreciate your partnership and your support over the last 30 years, and I look forward to continuing to build strong relationships over the next 30 years. Thank you all so much for your time tonight. It's a pleasure to be here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you all have.
Well, SELF has been a great partner with so many city projects, and it's great to see a, a special qualified person. You follow a very special qualified person in Jeff Diver, and it's just great to see that. I think one of the neat things besides Build Up Academy by itself is Build Up Academy being the juvenile detention center. I mean, they may as well be learning something.
Yes.
So I, I just think those programs are all great, and the IDA program, and, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Counsel.
Mr. Mayor, please.
Sarah, one thing the slideshow doesn't show, and it can't show, is that we get to see, that we're fortunate to see, is the mission moment before every meeting, normally before every meeting. And I think it's what really, you know, just really made me fall in love with the program because the stories that you see that these, that you hear from these people and how passionate they are, from people that didn't have a dime, they were living out on the street. And I remember a couple that came in there and what you guys did to help them manage their money, help them get ahead and get a home and, you know, actually straighten their lives out. They're just unique to see. That's actually the favorite part of my meeting, when we have those mission moments, and you can't see that on these slides, but it's a, it's definitely something that you know this program is working, and it's working well. So I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Very fulfilling, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Sarah, you don't have to say either, you know.
All right.
Thank you very much. I'll see you tomorrow night.
Sounds good. See you then.
We have a meeting tomorrow, so thank you.
All right, Ed, what's, Mr. Wilson, what's your next question?
Certainly. We have a signage update from the Planning and Zoning Specialist, Ms. Brooke Wells.
Hey. Good evening, Mayor Moller and members of city council. I will be presenting on behalf of the Planning Department about our sign required, temporary sign requirements, including appropriate size and sign placement within the city. This request, this information was requested in response to some questions about signs placed in the public right-of-way, as well as periods of time where we see an increase in display of signage throughout the city, for example, during elections and with campaign So the city of Hamilton's Planning Department regulates the use of temporary signage. This includes political signs, business promotions, and event announcements. The temporary sign regulations can be referenced in Section 1705 of the zoning ordinance. Staff actively enforces our regulations. And in an effort to be proactive in our communication about our requirements, a letter outlining the regulations was shared with upcoming election candidates and both political parties. And an article was also shared with the public through our city's social media and newsletter, just as a general public communication. So there are general rules that apply to all temporary signs. Signs cannot be illuminated. They need to be maintained in good condition and securely anchored. Signs must be placed a minimum of five feet from all property lines. Signs cannot be displayed for more than 90 consecutive days. And signs located within 20 feet of any street intersection or within 10 feet of a street and alley intersection cannot be more than 42 inches in height, and that is to, so that they don't obstruct traffic visibility. Residential properties are allowed a maximum of five signs. The total combined area of all those signs cannot exceed 10 square feet, and signs in residential areas cannot be more than four feet in height. Commercial and institutional properties located in residential areas are allowed up to 16 square feet of total signage. Again, signs in residential areas can't be more than four feet in height. Commercial and institutional properties can have one sign per street frontage or two signs for every 300 feet of lot frontage. And signs cannot be, or I'm sorry, signs need to be at least 25 feet from other temporary signs, and that's mainly to prevent any kind of sign clutter. Commercial and institutional properties located in non-residential areas are permitted up to 32 square feet of signage. And in non-residential areas, the signs can be no more than six feet in height. Signs also cannot be mounted to or fixed to fences, utility poles, bollards, benches, or other similar structures. All temporary signs are prohibited in the, in or over the public right-of-way, so this includes the area between the sidewalk and the street, street islands, public property, and any structure in the right-of-way, such as utility poles, lampposts, or shade trees. And Section 1931.15 of Property Maintenance Code does allow for any sign posted in violation to be removed or disposed of by the city. And city staff, we do have city staff actively enforcing our regulations and removing signs in violation when, when we observe them or when brought to our attention. In addition to that, if there are signs that are displayed on private property that are in violation, property owners could receive a notice of violation requiring the signs to be removed or to meet our requirements. Finally, we have a visual to demonstrate our, you know, guide where correct sign placement is permitted. So the area highlighted in green is typically where private property would be located in correct sign placement, and the area shaded in we do have city staff actively enforcing our regulations and removing signs in violation when we observe them or when brought to our attention. In addition to that, if there are signs that are displayed on private property that are in violation, property owners could receive a notice of violation requiring the signs to be removed or to meet our requirements. Finally, we have a visual to demonstrate our, you know, guide where correct sign placement is permitted. So the area highlighted in green is typically where private property would be located and correct sign placement, and the area shaded in red is what would be considered the public right-of-way between the sidewalk and the street where all signs are prohibited. Any questions?
Very good presentation. That picture says it a lot.
Thank you for doing this.
Yeah.
Perfect timing.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, we now go to audience of citizens, individuals who wish to speak. They speak during this part of the agenda or may speak or reserve the right to speak, specifically when the item is up for a vote on the council floor. Individuals who are speaking during the audience of citizens are required to sign this public speaking book that I have in front of me. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. We have Tina Jones first. Give us your name and your address, and then go into your topic.
My name's Tina Jones, five-zero-nine South Front Street, apartment six, Hamilton, Ohio. I wanted to come first of all and thank whoever was involved in making sure that some repairs were done in the Allen Park Apartments. A couple of weeks ago, I addressed some issues of prolonged conditions that, I don't know if you have the...
I can bring those up for you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you.
Is this correct, Ms. Jones?
Yes. A lot of these things, that these residents, the pictures that are displayed are three different apartments, and they have had these issues for over a year. And after I reached out, I didn't give any names or addresses, but apparently they knew exactly where to go to and started working, doing those repairs maybe five hours later. And I think that that is, I'm glad they did the repairs, but I shouldn't have had to reach out to someone to have these things, I don't know if you showed that video. The whole year, my neighbor has dealt with this, and also they moved it from one apartment to another apartment. When the people upstairs flush and let out their tub, it comes down the walls, and this is happening in several different apartments and constant floods. And, you know, I don't know if that was part of the public nuisance, but I think these are issues that should be on that list. And once again, I just would like to say thank you, and hopefully we'll have some continued progress and repairs done.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Right. Now that this has been addressed, can it be on a regular inspection by the Health Department to not let it happen again, or?
I'm not sure about the regularity of the inspections, but what I will say is thank Ms. Jones for bringing this to our attention, and I have been in contact with Liz Hayden as well as Marcus Oliver, who's done a lot of work with the management company down there at Neillan Park Apartments to address this issues and just the general issues of the apartment complex. Marcus provided a very detailed report about his interaction with the management company, and he did say that they have been responsive, and they have done some significant repairs. So we'll continue to work with the residents and advocating for them, as well as working with the property company to make sure that they're accountable for the condition of their property. So thank you, Ms. Jones.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, just one question, Ms. Jones. Is there, I mean, do you have a contact at the building, and that they have been non-responsive? How did it get to this point?
As far as the damage is not being prolonged?
Not being addressed.
That's a good question. When the residents have reached out to management and notified them, and they were very aware of those conditions.
Okay.
And some, those pictures, they've dealt with these for up to a year.
Wow.
But two weeks ago, they finally got work done.
All right. Thank you.
Tina, are there scheduled management tenant meetings, like, are they ever scheduled at all?
No.
Wow.
And what I didn't mention is that those concerns of mold and things, being that I had Legionnaires' pneumonia, I'm really, I don't know, I'm just really afraid that a lot of the, I know a lot of contamination is throughout the complex, and, you know, I don't want anybody to get sick, and as well as I forgot to mention that Neillan Park and the management, they took a sample of my water, but they let the city know that it was Legionnaires' free, but they still have not let me know anything. And I'm not sure whether to trust that test because I haven't been notified about anything. And hopefully I can get a test from the city or someone else. But thank you.
That was my next question, though. Has the building been cleared for mold? I mean, is that something, you're saying I didn't get any information on that?
No, it hasn't been tested. They tested my water, but they didn't test for mold or anything.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor Lauer?
Did I hear correctly that toilets were being flushed, and they were flooding below?
Yes, yes, in a few apartments.
Is that still going on?
I'm not certain as far as all of those. I know that maintenance has been very busy since that day, and they've been making repairs in, seems like almost all the buildings, so they've been very active in their past two weeks, so.
Ms. Jones, thank you for coming forward.
Mr. Mayor, Tina, help us with this picture of the foam, and where is that on the floor?
No, that's in her kitchen sink.
In the kitchen sink? It rises up when the toilets are flooded?
It just does that without anything being flushed.
Okay. Thank you for coming and talking to us a couple of months ago, and I'm glad that the activity is taking place, and I think you caught our attention again. I'll be in touch with you because I'd like to come down and walk through and see firsthand what's being done, what's not being done, and then we can take activity to ensure repairs are made. As the mayor said, there should be meetings between the tenants, it doesn't have to be every week, but once a month, just to listen. And a property manager that's assigned, if it's Tim Knapp, you get a conversation with Tim and say, hey, there's these three things that happened this month, can they be corrected? And then they should be back to you when they are corrected. So I'll come down and I'll visit with you, Tina. I've got your number. Thank you.
Awesome. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we have Harold Peetz.
Hello, my name is Harold Peetz. My address is twelve-eighty-eight Elizabeth Drive. I come to you today concerning the information that was recently put out on social media concerning street legal golf carts, or also known as low-speed vehicles, and I want to ask the council why this came up. I know it was mentioned in the posting on social media that it was a safety issue. We did research before purchasing one of these vehicles and found no regulation prohibiting them, so then we fell back on the state codes that are concerning these types of vehicles. And of course, you know, the vehicle we purchased falls, is covered completely by the state. So after purchasing it, we went to the BMV, we presented all our paperwork to them, they gave us license plates for it, we got our insurance on it, and we started driving it and had put over a hundred and fifty miles locally on it, passing police officers on a regular basis, not passing them, but driving by them, without any incident. We've heard of no incident concerning these vehicles, and we're just not sure why all of a sudden we're being told that they're not allowed on our streets when I can't find any local code or ordinance that forbids them.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Well, I've got one thing.
Okay.
Let me get this to the, first off, I'm not sure it was put on social media. Good, bad, right, wrong.
It was put on the City of Hamilton page and the police department.
But I know the police department's been talking with people about this very same issue, and I know that there's been hours probably spent on that. City Manager, can you just give an update on what, where we're at on this, because I know you probably know what's going on, the status now.
Sure. Sorry, I appreciate your comments, and I'd like a little bit more time just to research, make sure I have all my facts together before I respond to you. My understanding is that the local entities, cities can regulate these, and that's what we've chosen to do, but I want to verify some of that information and be happy to get your name and contact information and follow up with you directly.
Okay, well, I have my email on the sign-in list.
Yes, you signed it.
But, and to that point, when there's no language, when the municipality is mute on the subject, which in all of my research, that's what I found in this case, doesn't normally it fall back on the state regulation for the situation?
We're a charter city. We can do some things.
No, and it says in the state code...
Well, I'm not going to argue with you.
No, no, I'm not arguing. I'm just saying, in my research, the state code says the municipality has the option to have more stringent rules on low-speed vehicles.
I look forward to seeing the report from the city manager, then we can all kind of be on that same page and learn together.
Okay, and what I can say in my time driving it around the town, me and my wife, we've gotten numerous positive comments about it, and, you know, with our city and the direction it's going in, being more of an entertainment city, there were so many people that have commented about, you know, hey, I want to get one of those, those look like fun, and from a safety perspective, I really, my vehicle is no less safe than somebody driving a Jeep with no doors on it and no top on it going down the street. The only difference is mine will only go up to thirty miles an hour, and under the state regulations, it can be operated on any street as long as it has a thirty-five mile-an-hour speed limit or less. And in the City of Hamilton, there's very few places that I can't take it.
You make some good points, and I think it'd be a good break here so we can get that report, share it with you. We've got your email address.
Yes.
We'll all come to council, so we're all going to learn what the most recent conversation has been.
Okay, but in the posting that's been put out there, it clearly says if you're caught driving it, you're going to get cited, and for the life of me, I can't find what local code or ordinance they would use to cite. So in other words, our expensive toy is sitting in the driveway with a cover over, and we're not allowed to use it, or we could use it if we wanted to press the issue legally, but, you know, I don't want to do that. I want to operate it.
Our law director could probably give us some indication.
So we, and I can get with the city manager, but there, to summarize the basis, and I'm not sure what kind of vehicle, and so it varies by the type of vehicle, so we should get some more information as the city manager has indicated, but the, there's general law related to low-speed vehicles that basically states that it will be, you know, is specifically governed by local law, and since we haven't allowed it, it's not allowed, but we can follow up to determine what kind of vehicle he has to determine what are the categories it falls into, because it depends on how fast they're able to go, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you, it's registered as a low-speed vehicle, that's the, LSV is the determination on it, and we had to pay extra to have it titled in that manner so that we would be able to put tags on it and use it on city streets. But it's a golf cart. I mean, for lack of better terms, it's just a much nicer, prettier, more expensive golf cart.
Let's just see what the law director, city manager comes up with to share with all of us. I think that might be the best way to take a look at it right now.
Okay.
Thank you for coming to council.
All right, thank you.
Jim Lottman?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Anyway, okay, this is over on, where am I, over on, actually, we're on, um, Front Street.
Six Street, I think. You wrote down Sixth Street.
Okay, so right on the G Street, it's fine there, we turn right on the Ross Street up there, there's a big pothole right at the corner, right at the corner, a big pothole that hasn't been fixed, I guess, since last winter. Why is that?
Well, sometimes they do fix it, and sometimes the, what they, what they put down, the patch sometimes does break up.
Patched, we didn't patch it up at all.
Well... You gave us the address.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilor Zapp, if you know where it's at.
I submitted a three-one-one at about five forty-five with you this afternoon, Jim. You're standing right here. I submitted that into the system.
Thank you.
So it will be fixed, right?
Thank you.
So as I said to you, I really appreciate you coming to us with, when you see a pothole and you tell us about it, and that's why I entered it into the system this afternoon. So it will be fixed, as I told you, within a week. You've got to give us about a week to get to it, but it will be fixed, okay?
That's what I said. First of all.
There you go, Jim.
Also, one thing to thank you.
For being responsive.
You are, I'm on, going north on Third Street, and the turn lane, there weren't a potholes, you can't miss them. It hasn't been fixed like that since last winter either.
We will get to them, our professionals will get to them, and using the three-one-one is a way of getting that information out there, so I'm glad Councilmember Knapp worked with you on that.
Because I'm for the people in the city.
I know you are.
I love you all, I love you all, Mayor. You're good people.
Keep bringing things to our attention, and when you see any one of us mentioning to us, we'll get it moving, okay?
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Ian. Everybody knows him, Ian.
Ian. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, and of course, acting clerk of Ed Wilson. I'm sorry you didn't get to play pinball for the investiture. We know how to put on a show. We certainly know how to do that at the Fitton Center for Creative Arts. My name is Ian McKenzie-Thurley. I'm the executive director of the Fitton Center, one-oh-one South Monument Avenue here in beautiful downtown Hamilton, Ohio. I'm here this evening to invite city council, our city management, city staff, and of course, the good citizens of Hamilton to the Fitton Center season launch for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, which is this Friday night at the Fitton Center from five PM to nine PM. Here is a beautiful image created earlier by our good friends up at Lemon Grenade Creative. It is a free and public and open event. It's a full open house. You do not have to book, you do not have to get a ticket, you don't even have to tell us you're coming, but we would love to see the entire community there. As I said, it's a free and open event. It is summer-themed, it is fun-themed, it's called Fun and Games, so they'll be with our partners at Seventeen Strong, there'll be Giant Jenga and Cornhole and lots of fun and games, and kids will be able to come and make their own board game as part of all the creative things going in our galleries and in our studios downstairs. All of our fantastic galleries will be open, including our brand-new exhibition called Playtime, and most especially down in our community gallery, you'll see work by our creative aging artists, by our mosaic artists who are studying at the Fitton Center, our good friends at Booker T. Washington Community Center, and the Boys and Girls Club of Hamilton will be having all their work displayed downstairs in the galleries. There'll be a live band, there will be a bar, the bar will be open, not an open bar, and food by Two Women in the Kitchen. This is all in celebration of our upcoming twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six season. Tickets are now available for that, and of course, all our classes are available as well going into the fall year. So this is just me saying welcome. We'd like to invite people to come, and for people who haven't been to the Fitton Center before, we are not a city or a state entity, but we are a community entity, and we would like to open our doors to invite some people who may have never been to the Fitton Center before, bring somebody along. Let them come inside, see all that we have to offer, including scholarships for all ages, for all of our classes, and camps, and all the activities that we have going on throughout the year. It's a great way to get to know us, and for you to feel welcome and comfortable and have some fun at the Fitton Center this Friday night and through the entire season. And I thank you for your time and any questions you might have.
I want to thank you for the partnership that you developed with the Wellhouse. I think it's such a natural partnership.
Thank you.
And just to see... And just to see you folks talk and realize stronger together, that's community as well.
It's been incredibly exciting. The big news with that, we will be having the Ohio Artist Professional Network coming to Hamilton in October of next year for a three-day conference. They are incredibly excited about coming to Hamilton. They had their board retreat just last week at the Fitton Center, staying at the Well House, and they are loving Hamilton. They felt so incredibly welcome, not obviously, not only by the Fitton Center and the Well House, but by the entire community here. There are other places they might go that are somewhat more cookie cutter. We've all been to conferences before, which is Conference Room B and Restaurant A, that they really feel that there's something different, something electric, something exciting, not just for the arts, but the entire community, and have felt so welcome as part of that, as part of that invitation for them to come and have a look at us. And we've talked through them and then walked them through the city, both during the day and through the evening, to see what the nightlife is like, and they're absolutely loving Hamilton. This partnership with the Well House for us is a really very exciting thing for us at the Fitton Center and also on South Monument Avenue. It's nice to have good neighbors. It's good to have nice neighbors, and having the Well House there has been a fantastic addition, and we're looking forward to seeing what develops further down the street. I know that we've lost the police station there. Again, great neighbors to have. They've got a beautiful new house, but we have some space down on Monument Avenue that we would like to fill with life and energy and art and food and music, and bring that as another special part of what's going on in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ian, just one question. Will the musicians, you used the word electric, will they know the theme song shout?
I hope so. And my wife is also singing at the tennis this weekend. There's a young lady, Ms. Perkula, who's going to be playing this weekend, so she'll be singing that often in those great, that great... We do love our Buffalo Bills here in Hamilton, at least two of us.
That was a play. See, nobody else caught it.
Thank you. But thank you for bringing up that. I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time. We'd love to see you all there at the Fitton Center on Friday night, and of course, to the public and community here in Hamilton. You are most welcome. We appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, Bob Harris. You can enter the room.
He's coming in right now, sir.
Thank you.
Bob Harris, 429 South Second Street, President of Southeast Civic Association. Good evening to council and audience of council. This evening, I would like to thank all of the city that participated to help the cleanup that we have for Second and Fourth Ward to be as successful as it was. Having said that, we discovered some things, and we're going to try to change some things to make it a little bit better so that we don't have, you know, a big event going on with a big event. However, I think it was one of the best cleanups that we've had and look forward to the challenge next year. I especially appreciate the extra effort that, you know, the council and the City Manager and all those from the city that stepped up to help out at the last minute when needed. Having said that, we're looking for a better year. Next for me, I'd like to address the fact that we had a meeting the first Monday of the month with CAC, and one of the big topics was the housing that's being built in the Fourth Ward. We also had seekers meeting Monday, and that was a big topic. I would like to ask the council, those who want to participate, and the City Manager that we have a special meeting so that we can discuss the housing. And some of the things that came up in the two meetings that I was involved in, I think it's highly important that we do that so that we all are on the same page and we know what's happening, why it's happening, and what we would like to see happen. I did mention Monday night that we've had at least three to four meetings with Miami University, and I would like to discuss that in the meeting also over the last 15 years in terms of how we want to build out our community and what we'd like to see and what it's going to take to get that done. So I appreciate all of the patience and all of the people that are involved in everything that we're doing. I think we've had a stellar year. We've been busy from day one, and we're still busy. We've had some good events, and we've had some good, you know, response to the events. And I think some people are working exceptionally hard, and that goes with Lauer, that goes with the City Manager, that goes with council, those who show up to help out and become a part of. I heard Councilman Lauer said, look, we need to step beyond Pershing. We're stepping. So now we need to run to get some things done and get some recognition. And last, November the 8th, we're having a celebration for the flagpole, and we want all of the city to participate, veterans from all over the city. We want to make this a big splash. So I'm pretty sure that the City Manager and Lauer will be talking to council about that and also Liz. And from our heart, thank you, appreciate it, and together we can make anything happen. God bless you.
Thank you, Bob. And I'll mention that on the February 8th event towards the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes care of audience and citizens. We now go to the consent agenda, and that includes all staff reports, caucus reports, meeting minutes, and information reports, including the June 2025 finance report and investment report. We're going to go into the whole, which allows council to ask questions and hear from our professionals about what's coming up on our agenda. And I'll set the motion to regular meeting be recessed, and the committee the whole take place.
So vote.
Second.
Motion Member Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All in the same side. Hearing now, and that motion is carried at 6:58. Cox, agenda, item number one. You want to lead us in this, Ed?
Number one is a recommendation relative to approving a request from Mill 1883 LC for local tier tax abatement through the community reinvestment program. Leave Mr. Gunnerson. Yes, there you are. Yeah, Mr. Gunnerson, for this one, sir.
Mayor, City Council, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. What's before you is a recommendation relative to the request for local tier tax abatement through the community reinvestment area. City has received a request from the developer, Mill 1893 LC, which is Bloomfield-Shawn. The developer proposes to renovate and a vacant historic building that's located in Lindenwald. The development will be comprised of about 125 lifestyle apartments and 7,000 square feet of commercial space. Can it hasn't been identified as of yet. In total, it's about 100,000 square feet on 5.2 acres. This is some of the work that Bloomfield-Shawn has done in other communities, and I think there's been some of the council I know that have been down to these projects as well. And I know I toured this one. It's really quite amazing in, on the north side of Cincinnati with the renovation completed in 2011. 12,000 square feet, commercial space, and 110 market rate apartments, very comparable to what they're proposing to do with the Benny Hoffen Building, Schuler-Benny Hoffen Building in Lindenwald. It's another Peter's Cartridge Factory. This is one in Hamilton Township. That was probably their most recent one that they've done. And again, this is about the same size of project is what they're proposing with the Schuler-Benny Hoffen Project. Property is located in the neighborhood, the Lindenwald neighborhood. I had to correct part of this in the communication page that I had. It indicated that the project was going to be about an $18 million plus project. I think I grabbed an iteration of something that had been previously put together. I think their estimate is around $29 million over... They're working with their contractors right now to come up with costs on some of the stuff. So we've just had communication with them. They're working, you know, trying to get some of the numbers in order. Tenet is projected to hire about 30 full-time employees over a three-year period. The proposed community reinvestment area, the CRA abatement terms being requested is 100% for 15 years. Questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a recommendation relative to amending Section 1733.01H of the Qualified Ordinance of Hamilton. That is pertaining to the burial permit fee affected by House Bill 96. We have this hog with us today.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here this evening to speak to you about recommendation for two amendments regarding the city burial fee permit. First, I'd like to provide some background of the ORC, which addresses the burial permit requirements. There is an increase to the state mandated burial permit fee in that amendment. The current state mandated burial fee is $3, with $2.50 being remitted to the state treasury. The amended fee is $10, with $9.50 being remitted to the state treasury fee. This legislation will be effective with the date of September 30th. This amended state legislation affects our city in two ways. The first way concerns our current fee schedule. Currently, our city bureau permit fee is $3. But to align with the amended state mandated fee of $10 and to prevent the city from incurring a $7 shortfall per permit, the city will need to increase the burial permit fee to $10. As this amendment, as this amended state legislation is effective September 30th, city administration is requesting an emergency ordinance for this increase in the fee to ensure that the fee is in place before September 30th. The second way the amended state legislation affects our city concerns our recently adopted fee schedule. On July 9th, city council adopted a fee schedule that is effective December 1st. That adopted fee schedule lists the burial permit fee as $3. On July 11th, the Bureau of Vital Statistics notified our Health Department of the amended state mandated burial permit fee. So there will need to be an amendment to the recently adopted ordinance to reflect the state mandated burial permit fee of $10. This will ensure compliance with the state legislation, will prevent a negative fiscal impact to the city. Emergency ordinance is not recommended in this case due to the fee schedule being effective December 1st. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, next we have number item three, a recommendation relative to amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in the emergency ordinance number EOR 2024-12117, adopted December 11, 2024, and has amended from time to time relative to creating the Assistant HR Director classification.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be making this presentation on behalf of Jean Pope, our HR Director. She sent over a brief explanation that I'd like to read. The City of Hamilton continues to grow in size, complexity, and workforce needs, making it essential to have an Assistant HR Director to provide dedicated leadership and operational support. By adding this position, the city can better respond to evolving workforce challenges, streamline decision-making, and maintain a proactive, people-centered approach to serving employees in the community. On behalf of Brandon Sarver, the Executive Director of Strategy and Personnel, myself, I would also recommend this position. It will not add an FTE, but will simply elevate an existing staff member within the HR Department. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll actually continue with items four through six. Those items are actually City of Hamilton applicants via the Planning Department. Number four is a recommendation relative to approving a petition to vacate portions of North B Street right-of-way and Ray Avenue right-of-way at Spooky Nook, situated in the 1st Ward, north side of the City of Hamilton. Item number five is a recommendation relative to approving a petition to vacate a portion of right-of-way situated between 53 Van Buren Drive and 57 Van Buren Drive, situated in the 5th Ward of the City of Hamilton. And item number six is a recommendation relative to a petition to vacate a portion of Fox Avenue, Skilman Avenue, Dixie Highway Alley, and Bell Avenue Alley, Drana Hybrid, situated in the 6th Ward, north side of the City of Hamilton. I'll be doing that one real quick. Good evening, everyone. Ed Wilson, on behalf of the Planning Department. What you're seeing is item number four, which is the petition to vacate rights-of-way along Spooky Nook to align the properties and the right-of-ways with the existing reconfigured development of the sports complex. The right item is Ray Avenue, Hunter Avenue, a portion of it between the street and sidewalk. The second one is along the frontage of the Conference Center. You'll notice that the right-of-way is actually going towards that, and this is to rectify the actual correct land of that street reconfiguration. And number three is actually a corner of right-of-way that's remaining on the southeastern corner of the main parking lot. This is all to correct and rectify the actual rights-of-way property lines per the city engineering team. Though there's a close-up of item number one, you'll see that it actually is encompassing what is now Spooky Nook property that's being occupied by it. Item number two, the drop-off area primarily for the Conference Center. And then item number three, the corner of North B Street that's actually right-of-way but clearly occupied by the Spooky Nook property. Are there any questions on this petition to vacate?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question. So on Hunter, that's not closing Hunter.
No, it's not closing it. It's...
Just property, the way it's been built?
Yes, it's to realign that.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
It's one of many times where we had to rectify it, especially with, because of how many right-of-ways were involved with the creation of the Spooky Nook complex entirely.
Yep, got it. Thank you.
And please do forgive my voice. Came down with a couple of things, but were there any other questions? Okay, I'll move on to item five then. 53 and 57 Van Buren, there's actually a bit of right-of-way between those two residential properties that used to lead into the former Van Buren Elementary. The neighbor at 53 Van Buren is interested in some of that right-of-way, and after forwarding it to the city engineering team, engineering no longer has the interest in that right-of-way in question, hence making it a city petition for said right-of-way. I'll get a close-up on that item for visual purposes. Were there any questions on this petition to vacate?
Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm. We're allowing.
So where would the entryway be now if somebody wanted to develop that property?
There would still be right-of-way access along the Lincoln Avenue. So let's see if this works. Oh, you can't see it on there. Let's see. That Lincoln Avenue portion would still remain as right-of-way, so if there was something that came in the future, that would be the access for that property. Were there any further questions? Okay, thank you very much. And then the item number six is Drana Hybrid. These are rights-of-way vacations, and it's to accommodate the proposed Drana Hybrid campus expansion that I had before the Planning Commission and City Council, but there were still remaining right-of-ways within the, primarily the 1093 Bell Avenue property. So this is part of a city initiative, right-of-way vacation, in order to help get a full contiguous campus and property for the proposed Drana Hybrid expansion. And there are the close-ups of the rights-of-way in question. So the portion of Skilman and Fox Avenue that are bordered by and owned by the Drana Hybrid properties. Number two would be Bell Avenue Alley. It's actually a paper alley between running east-west. And then the third one in blue is the Dixie Highway Alley that's actually running across the city. And then the third one in blue is the Dixie Highway Alley that's actually running more south in blue. That is the summation. Are there any questions for this petition to vacate?
No.
Okay. That's my conclusion. Thank you very much. Okay, let's see. Okay, resuming. Item number seven, that pertains to a recommendation relative to approving the donation of a city-owned surplus vehicle to Butler County, Ohio, to support intergovernmental cooperation and promote the continued efficient use of public resources. We have Dan Arthur with us for that item.
Could you pull this off for me a second?
I can pull up the item for you, sir.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. As you may recall, in the early meeting on July 9th, I did a presentation on the EVs that we were able to secure through that grant program. And with that program, as I mentioned there, we had got 10 vehicles. One of those vehicles, our intent is to donate to Butler County for their participation in allowing us to get those additional funds. We were able to secure an extra quarter of a million dollars through that program with them signing off that letter that they weren't going to have those funds, so, or that those weren't being used there. Anyways, so part of that, we were wanting to donate a vehicle to them, and this is the legislation to allow us to do that. Any questions?
Thank you, Dan.
All right, next is number eight, a recommendation relative to approving a request to utilize Section 171.06A of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, for waiving the advertisement for the purchase of emergency vehicles for the Greenup Hydroelectric Plant.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to request, well, as he said, waiving of advertising for purchase of emergency repair services on Unit 2 Greenup Facility. As of now, it's still an ongoing event. These are the costs we've incurred on the repairs we've made so far to Unit 2 for Mighty Con Atlas machine and HS shown installation in there. So it's a significant sum of money and still ongoing. Okay, so initially, we were experiencing mechanical issues at the Greenup Plant with Unit 2, and we had to take it out of operation. It was several weeks ago. Team noticed problems with controlling the blade on the unit and determined, from our investigation, we determined one of the problems was upstream air oil seal leak in a certain compartment. So we went into most of those expenses there for the repair of that item. After replacing this seal and reassembling the unit, we were still having issues developing pressure to move the blades. And we are now in the process of disassembling some other components to verify what we now believe what the rest of the problem is. So we found one problem, but not all of them yet. So we're in that process right now. This is kind of a side-section view of what I'm talking about of the power plant. I don't have a laser pointer, but if you see the shaft under the gantry crane, there's a stop logs we put in, okay, in front of the unit there. It's stop log now. The gate's down in the back here, and that pit is, we dewatered that pit. So we're working in this unit here now is what we're talking about. That's the generator and turbine unit. And then right now, we've got scaffold built so you can climb down into the pit. You've got the scaffold built on the other side, so we can just take the nose cone off of the, off of the unit. So again, it's major work. It's not just a 10-minute job. We're talking, it's going to be a while still. When I say nose cone, that's a section, that's a section of one of the units. I'm not sure if it's two or not, but if it water passage dried out, you can see a little bit of scaffold in the background, and you can see the size we're talking about right now. And the nose cone's that part in the center facing out, which the hydraulic controls and that are in there. We have an issue with the hydraulic controls on the outside of the unit. And on the inside of the unit, you can see where we got the guys working, and the tubing, pipe that you see running down the centers are concentric tubes that have tubes within tubes that have hydraulics in it. And we believe that there's the issues, the hydro, there's leaks in the hydraulics, so we're taking those apart along with, along with the other, with the other end where they connect. So again, it's an ongoing problem, and I'll probably be back to you with more cost expense as we're going along, because there's no, this is not something you can really bid out. There's very few experts, and you've got to keep who we're familiar with the plant. So, but that's what's ongoing. I'm just requesting a waive the fee so we can keep going with the project. Is there any questions?
Bill, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Bill, how deep is that when you show us it in the scotch, in the diagram?
I think when you're in the bottom of the plane, you're at least 60 foot under the river.
I could tell it was massive.
Eighty-five?
Eighty-five. Because of the impeller that you showed us in the character, the figurine in the middle, that again, it's...
That's actually one of the work, I think that's Cody Brown, actually, the superintendent.
Hopefully, you let him out at night. But importantly, it's massive, and the work that you're doing is, like you said...
So of course, that's all a slope surface that's underwater, so it's cleaned off. You've built scaffold in there. You've got to weld down to it. You've got to weld lifting lugs to the ceiling so you can lift the stuff off, because the nose cone caps, I think, 3,500 pounds. And that nose cone cap hasn't been off in 40 years, so it's not, it's not like it's something that's a normal occurrence there, so.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, Bill, this is unexpected maintenance, I guess?
Yes.
And there aren't warranties, there aren't things that cover this? It's just expenses that we hope never happen?
No, we've, we've, we're in a capital improvement plan, and we've been going through parts of the system already. It's just the runner hub, which is what we call the section that controls the hydraulics. We have not got to that section, so it's, it's kind of beat us to it. So we've, we've done work on the inside seal before, but not on the runner hub on the outside. It's in our long-term plan. It just got pushed forward sooner.
And then thinking forward, how long will it last? I mean, I don't know that you can predict, but is this like a 20-year fix or...
Once we get done, this fixed, we're not, we're only going to go as deep as we need to. Right now, we're not going to take apart the whole assembly. We're going to plan a scheduled outage for that, not just through the middle of peak season like we are right now. But we intend, after we get done with our cap, we're going to get another 40 to 50 years of these units.
Oh, wow.
And I mean, you've got 50 years on them now, so I mean, you expect to get about 100 years out of a hydro plant.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Next, we have number nine, a recommendation relative to authorizing the city manager to enter a memorandum of agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 3169 AFL-CIO to amend the current collective bargaining agreement in Schedule I-1 of the city's classification and compensation plan relative to establishing the classifications of Inspector 1, Inspector 2, and Inspector 3 to replace the current classification of inspector. We have Mr. Rivera here with us.
Good evening. This change is similar to what I was here for last time with the positions that we created. The big difference is this is a collective bargaining unit position. So you have the inspector position right now, which is just one generic inspector position, and we'll be dividing it into three different categories based on the ability of what they're able to perform, based on their certifications and their skills that they attain to, to do different types of inspections. So we've been working with the collective bargaining unit on developing a memorandum of agreement, and that's going very well. It's not signed at the moment, but we've had very positive conversations with them. Hopefully, expect to have that in place by the time we meet again. And as you can see there, it's, it doesn't change anything with the hierarchy. It's still in, at that same level. An inspector 2 doesn't have authority over 1. It's just the ability for them to do more. So it just, it helps achieve our goals of retaining employees. I have two right now that would qualify for the inspector 3. It's our intent to promote them as soon as this goes into effect. That will help us with retaining those employees. And then down the road, if we find ourselves in a position where we need to hire again, we would just advertise all three types and see if we would be able to attract people who already have that experience or certifications in place. Or if not, if we hired somebody at the entry-level position, it would serve as the incentive to obtain the additional skills, just so we can continue to do more with less. So it'll put us in a very stable position as a department moving forward. So with that, appreciate your time. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Next, we have item number 10, a recommendation relative to making supplemental appropriations for current expenses, the city fiscal year ending in December 31, 2025.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is a relatively small supplemental appropriation. It's the third one of the year. Excuse me. The big ticket item, as you can see, is the $1.5 million payment to the TID for North Hamilton Crossing. This is being paid out of the $7 million of ARPA funds we set aside in 2021. Including that payment, we've spent just over $3 million of those ARPA funds. Also, in the infrastructure renewal program, commonly referred to as Fund 311, we have $500,000 for East Avenue and Park Avenue curb ramps, and then we have $250,000 for water main improvements. Any questions on that?
Questions? Thank you, Dave.
Next is item number 11, a recommendation relative to the approval of a conditional use application for 644, 646, and 654 East Avenue, as well as 934, 936, and 938 East Avenue for four infill, single-family dwelling residences on the parcels that are Zoned B2 zoning district community business. We have Ms. Nelson here with us for that item.
Good evening. So again, related to Build Back the Block, the Planning Department is actively working through a rezoning of then most of the Jefferson neighborhood. The zoning that's in place is outdated and doesn't really reflect the actual nature of the neighborhood. So this is a prime example. So these lots, which are in an area that's predominantly single-family homes on this side of the street, and the adjacent properties are single-family homes, it's currently Zoned B2, and single-family residential is a conditional use on those parcels. So the rezoning will have this rezoned to traditional neighborhood where single-family residences permitted. But in order to not slow down what's in motion with Build Back the Block, the rezoning process is lagging a little bit behind getting these under construction, and so we just went ahead and went to Planning Commission with the conditional use application so that we're not slowing down and waiting on the rezoning to keep things in motion for Build Back the Block. So this is really just, the conditional use is needed at this time. Once this is rezoned, which will be in the very near future, this step would not be necessary. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more item. That is actually item number 12. It's a recommendation relative to approving a request for a major amendment to Plan Hamilton, the city's comprehensive plan, by adopting the proposed Innovation District Master Plan to the Comprehensive Plan. I'll do that one very briefly. Good evening, everyone, again. Ed Wilson for the Planning Department. I'll present item number 12. This is actually a major amendment to City of Hamilton's Comprehensive Plan, Plan Hamilton, by doing the Innovation District Master Plan. This is actually involving the greater amount of the area of the University Commerce Park along Grand Boulevard and University Boulevard, and includes some of the Lindenwall neighborhood as well as some of the Second Ward neighborhood. And basically, this was done by Miami University College students. They did the plan throughout the beginning half of this year, which included site visits, assessing existing conditions, several public meetings, including proposal presentations and visiting sections, which were handled at the Miami University campus. They presented the April plan, the draft plan in April, while the final plan was delivered in May. And because we want to continue to have our Comprehensive Plan be an evolving document that we can base our present-day and future land use and zoning decisions, we wanted to take the recommendations of the plan and adopt it as part of Plan Hamilton. Okay, some of those planned items for the Innovation District include mixed land use, which involves student housing with retail, walkability in order to have walkable spaces that are walking is safe between the campus and between any other developments that are in this district area, green space, creating the gathering spaces for the Innovation District as well as the related uses, and then place-making along with that to create a sense of community place for this area and connection. That's the summation of the report. Do we have any questions?
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Office of the Motion, the Committee of the whole meet. Closed?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Fear, second, and Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none. The motion is carried at 7:28. Office of the Motion, it's regular, meaning be reconvened.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nab, second, and Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Certainly. Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
That motion carries 7-0.
Time of that motion acceptance was 7:28. The House of the Motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman?
Make a motion that with the exception of the items so noted, council receive the reports of the consent agenda and incur on the recommendations.
Second.
Mr. Vice Mayor Pullman, second, and Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried also at 7:28. Now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items announced.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab?
I move that a note be made about the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Councilmember Nab, second, and Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:29. We go to pending legislation, Agenda I of number 13.
Certainly.
Second reading of an ordinance involving a lease agreement with Community First Solutions. If you may now read the entire...
Excuse me. Number 13, an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter to a First Amendment to lease agreement with Community First Solutions for office space at the Community First Research Center located at 230 Ludlow Street, Hamilton, Ohio, 45011. Community First Solutions lease or, City of Hamilton lease c. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Vaughn, second, and Councilmember Nab. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Agenda item number 14 under new legislation, two rings of emergency ordinance, 936, 938 East Avenue, and some real estate agreements.
Certainly. An emergency ordinance authorizing the disposition of properties located at 936 and 938 East Avenue, Hamilton, Ohio, 45011, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and purchase of real estate agreement, funding agreement, and related documents for said properties. City of Hamilton, property owner, consortium for ongoing reinvestment efforts, purchaser. Two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
I'd like to make a motion that the rules be suspended and the said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Councilmember Lauer, second, and Councilmember Fear. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Certainly. Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Second reading of the emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the disposition of properties located at 936 and 938 East Avenue, Hamilton, Ohio, 45011, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and purchase of real estate agreement, funding agreement, and related documents for said properties. City of Hamilton, property owner, consortium for ongoing reinvestment efforts, purchaser. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
I'd like to make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Lauer, second, and Councilmember Fear. Any discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
That motion carries 7-0. Certainly. An emergency ordinance authorizing the disposition of property located at 1205 Ludlow Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and purchase of real estate agreement, funding agreement, and related documents for said property. City of Hamilton, property owner, Todd Homes LLC purchaser, two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call vote, please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Second reading of the emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the disposition of property located at 1205 Ludlow Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and purchase of real estate agreement, funding agreement, and related documents for said property. City of Hamilton, property owner, Todd Homes LLC purchaser, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Any comments, discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Certainly. Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Agenda item number 16, Two Rings of Emergency Ordinances, 825 Maple Avenue, Real Estate Agreements Associated.
Certainly. An emergency ordinance authorizing the disposition of properties located at 825 Maple Avenue and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and purchase of real estate agreements, funding agreements, and related documents for said property. City of Hamilton, property owner, Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati purchaser, two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Lauer. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Second reading of that emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the disposition of properties located at 825 Maple Avenue and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and purchase of real estate agreements, funding agreements, and related documents for said property. City of Hamilton, property owner, Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati purchaser, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Lauer. Questions, comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call, though.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Agenda item number 17, which is Two Rings of Emergency Ordinances Involving 829 Ludlow Street, Real Estate Agreements and Related Documents.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the disposition of property located at 829 Ludlow Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and purchase of real estate agreement, funding agreement, and related documents for said property. City of Hamilton, property owner, Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati purchaser, two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title. Second.
Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Go to agenda item number 18, and that would be, I think we're on, 18 or 17?
We had to, second roll.
Oh my God, my fault. Just flipped pages on me. Okay, second reading of the motion, second reading of the ordinance, then, please.
Certainly, sir. An emergency ordinance authorizing the disposition of property at 829 Ludlow Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and purchase of real estate agreement, funding agreement, and related documents for said property. City of Hamilton, property owner, Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati purchaser, second reading.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance be adopted. Second.
Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Now we go to agenda item number 18, which is Two Rings of an Ordinance, Emergency Ordinance, involving 906 Ludlow Street, Related Real Estate Agreements, Funding Agreements, and Related Documents.
Certainly. An emergency ordinance authorizing the disposition of property located at 906 Ludlow Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and purchase of real estate agreement, funding agreement, and related documents for said property. City of Hamilton, property owner, Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati purchaser, two readings.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended, said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Name by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on the motion.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
That motion carries 7-0.
Second reading of that emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the disposition of property located at 906 Ludlow Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and purchase of real estate agreement, funding agreement, and related documents for said property. City of Hamilton, property owner, Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati purchaser, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
That motion carries 7-0.
Go to agenda item number 19, Two Rings of Emergency Ordinances, 818 Ludlow Street, Real Estate Agreements, Funding Agreement, Related Documents.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the disposition of property located at 818 Ludlow Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and purchase of real estate agreement, funding agreement, and related documents for said property. City of Hamilton, property owner, Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati purchaser, two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
I'd like to make a motion that the rules be suspended and the said ordinance be read a second time by its title. Second.
And a Councilmember Lauer, second by Councilmember Nab. Roll call vote on those motions.
Mueller?
Second. I mean, yes. Yep, yep, I'm sorry.
Pullman?
All right, that's two in a row.
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
About a second reading of that emergency ordinance, please.
Certainly. An emergency ordinance authorizing the disposition of property located at 818 Ludlow Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and purchase of real estate agreement, funding agreement, and related documents for said property. City of Hamilton, property owner, Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati purchaser, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
I'd like to make a motion that the ordinance be adopted. Second.
Councilmember Lauer, second by Councilmember Nab. Okay, any discussion on that one? Hearing none, roll call, vote, please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
That motion carries 7-0.
Go to agenda item number 20, Two Rings of Emergency Ordinances, 810 Ludlow Street, Involving Real Estate Agreements and Other Terms of Agreements.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the disposition of property located at 810 Ludlow Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and purchase of real estate agreement, funding agreement, and related documents for said property. City of Hamilton, property owner, Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati purchaser, two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Lauer. Roll call vote, please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
That motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Second reading of that emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the disposition of property located at 810 Ludlow Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and purchase of real estate agreement, funding agreement, and related documents for said property. City of Hamilton, property owner, Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati purchaser, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Lauer. Discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Go to agenda item number 21, Two Rings of Emergency Ordinances Involving Funding Agreement with Habitat for Humanity.
Certainly. I can read that for you. Emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a funding agreement and related actions with Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati related to the construction of a single-family residence at 821 Ludlow Street, two readings.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended, said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Nab. Roll call vote.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman? Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
And Lauer?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Second reading of that emergency ordinance involving 821 Ludlow Street.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a funding agreement and related actions with Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati related to their construction of a single-family residence at 821 Ludlow Street, second reading.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Nab. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Knab?
Yes.
And Lowery?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we go to agenda item number twenty-two, which is a resolution involving side lots.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, nine oh three and nine thirteen Greenwood Avenue, four seventeen South Seventh Street.
Mr. Precious. Councilmember Ryan, did you say that? Or who said that?
That was him.
That was me.
I thought you said something.
You're the, uh, council member.
Hey so quiet.
Councilmember Ryan.
I move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Ryan, first, second, councilmember Knab. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Knab?
Yes.
And Lowery?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Right, so I want to say there's been a lot of work done behind each one of those pieces of legislation, um, from all of our professionals, and that's an incredible lot of, of work for this very, very special project. Thank you to Mr. City Manager and all of our professionals who worked on this. And audience of the city, Andrew.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. I would also just like to acknowledge our staff on two areas, improving infrastructure, improving safety. Recently, I had a lot of positive comments for our Public Works Department. Dan Arthur's here tonight, but on behalf of those residents, I want to thank your team for completing the mill and fill program on the three hundred and four block of Cleveland Avenue, so a stretch of road that hadn't been repaved in decades. Our teams were out there, and it's a pretty wide section of roadway there. It took a real Herculean effort to get new, new pavement in those blocks, but we appreciate those teams. This is a citywide initiative that we endeavor to improve the quality of our roads, in addition to the capital pavement program that you would see like on Millville Avenue, which was recently completed as well. In terms of improving safety, our, our planning department, our engineering department, our police department, utility operations have, have all worked together over many years now to improve traffic safety. In the most recent report back from the Ohio Department of Transportation, looking back over the most recent five-year period, noted a, over eighty percent reduction in the crash rate per one hundred thousand individuals, as well as serious bicycle, pedestrian crash rates as well. So, two areas that we, we had a very low rating in for, for a period of time, and again, a concerted effort by many departments across the city to improve that safety number, and those numbers are really incredible, and we're really proud of, of those efforts, and want to explore the, just the cause and effect behind each of those efforts, and make sure that we can push those out, safety efforts out throughout the city. Thank you.
All right, audience of the city council, I don't normally go first, but I think I am on this one. You put those two things up, thank you. All right, we got two slides of, of young men who helped save their fellow military brothers or sisters, and this is one of them right now, Josh Brainerd, Army veteran. Like many veterans, he had adjustment issues when he got out of the military. He attended a program called Save a Warrior, willing to counsel fellow veterans in that program, Save a Warrior, and as well as he's a service officer for the American Legion. Great letter written by his wife, and a nomination from his wife, the American Legion resulted in him being named hometown hero at the Reds game September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. And so he'll be introduced between innings, standing on a dugout. He's very emotional about this, and he is naturally a tremendous guy. Many of us do know him. September happens to also be Mental Health Awareness Month, so that was all orchestrated by the Reds, American Legion, led by Ken Callahan. Lot of folks going down there to that game. American Legion's helped putting this together. The Drink Tavern is, Monkey Mutual Aid Society, a lot of folks, and it'd be great if other folks from the city could join us down there. And I can get you any kind of information, that's my law office and personal email address, and it's gonna be really a special night to see somebody from our city being recognized for doing something absolutely tremendous. If you know Josh Brainerd and the family he comes from, absolutely a tremendous, tremendous guy. So, consider going down to that game, definitely, and to see one of our own be recognized. Maybe a few tears of the group, tears of happiness for him. Next slide, please. Okay, you heard Bob Harris talk about an event that Bob and Joel Lowery, and I think Liz Hayden and others were getting together, and it's to put a flagpole back where there used to be a flagpole at Bailey Square, and it's now kind of become a special event of a flagpole at Bailey Square, but also recognition of Staff Sergeant Fred Brown, Garfield High School graduate. He was killed in action in Vietnam, went to the middle of the firefight to take three injured soldiers to safety, going in separate times, carrying the third wounded soldier. He got wounded, actually mortally wounded, but he still got that gentleman back to safety, and then he threw himself between a grenade and that third injured individual. That's a tremendous person that not many people knew about. That is his photo from the wall of faces from the Vietnam Memorial. So all of a sudden, this great idea of a flag that Joel and Liz and others have been involved with, we, the American Legion got involved, so at Bailey Square on November eighth, that's the weekend before Veterans Day, twelve noon, there's gonna be a very special dedication, and it's still kind of coming together, but let's just say it's gonna be something that probably won't be forgotten by those who attend, those who know about it, and those who will learn about Fred Brown. Those are two slides of two young men who took care of their fellow military brothers and sisters, and that story hopefully will get out so much that he's been awarded the Distinguished Service Cross, which is an incredible, incredible recognition by our country, with the hope that it becomes a Medal of Honor, because that's the kind of gentleman from our city that they could make a special documentary about what this man did. It'd be great if we knew the three individuals who he saved, what kind of families they had, what lives they lived, what they accomplished because of his not being selfish in any way, shape, or form. So, stay tuned, we think that's gonna be an incredible story, will continue to be an incredible story, and it's just two special people that our city is recognizing. Joy will mention anything because you've been involved in this.
I just want to say that this has been a great effort, and I really appreciate Liz Hayden, Sika, Mr. Mayor in, in the Legion. His story is, is incredible. On that third, trying to retrieve the third soldier from battle, diving onto a grenade is the most selfless act that you can. He is absolutely one of our most distinguished veterans. I am happy to be a part of this, in hopes that we can, in the future, secure the Medal of Honor for him. He is certainly deserving of it.
Councilmember Tippman has been involved in a lot of veterans events, I'm sure will be involved with, with these events.
Thank you, Mayor.
I just want to speak first, because this is so special, I just wanted to get that set, get that out there, and hopefully get it along people's calendars. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for giving these slides, and then Sarah, your help on this, and Daniel for your help on this, because I might just ask it to be put up there at some degree of frequency to remind us about those events, which really makes us special in Hamilton. Okay, I'll focus on council, I'm sorry, I went first.
Mr. Mayor, no, that's great, I'm glad you went first. It's a great story, and I know Josh real well, so, kind of a good story for Hamilton is, everybody knows I'm kind of a trained nut anyway, but I, there was a group called the Greater Cincinnati modular railroad association that showed their layout at the Spooky Nook, which I kind of hooked them up with, and I really didn't, sorry, I didn't expect a lot to go on with this, but these guys are all from Cincinnati, and I stopped there every day for a couple hours and talked with these guys, and, and they were so happy with Hamilton about how well Hamilton treated them, and it was kind of neat to see, you know, a lot of these clubs that are out there, everybody knows that there's old guys like us in clubs, and, you know, the younger people aren't coming into it because, I don't know, maybe it's the iPads, the Internet, or whatever, but there was a lot of the players stopping by, look at this, and one of the guys from the club said, you know, they're so nice here at Spooky Nook, that the food manager bought our dinner the other night. I said, okay, so, I saw Sam, and Sam is just like ecstatic, this great, so I didn't even know this was going on, and so I said, I want you to meet these guys, ever come over, and he goes, oh, I met him the other night, that's the food manager, and I said, well, he's actually the owner, and they were so, oh my God, they were impressed, and they were just, and Sam's actually so impressed by this, he said, this is so good to see young people broaden their horizons besides sports and everything, and he just was watching it all weekend, he actually invited them back, he said, we could have you here two or three times a year, and the Hamilton Visitor Centers would like to have them there. I don't know, I didn't think it was going, going that good, but it's kind of neat that these people from Cincinnati came in, talked about, they go to a lot of places, and they said they've never been treated so well as Hamilton, Ohio, and they got a whole new opinion of Hamilton. So a lot of good things happened with that, so I was pleasantly surprised, and also pretty proud that our city was so nice to them and everything. So, next time they come around, stop by and see them, so, thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Knab.
This afternoon, I went to the New Hummer Funeral Home to pay our respects to Lieutenant Minfrady. The, I can't tell you the outpouring from the statewide fire departments, other, other communities that had apparatus there in addition to Hamilton Fire Department. Our, our fire department, men and women that were there in dress uniforms, retired